All right, I'll call the media order. Any public comment tonight?
Go for it, Mike.
Right, being done. I need a motion to approve the agenda as presented tonight.
Don't move, Mr. President.
Todd.
Second time.
Thank you, Dennis. All in favor of the agenda as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. In a motion to approve the minutes from July tenth. Jonathan?
All second.
Aaron? All in favor of the minutes from July tenth, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Need a motion to approve requisitions twenty-four, five, seventy-eight through twenty-four, six, oh, seven.
Second, Mr. President.
Todd. I'm assuming there's some, there's some questions somebody might.
Yeah.
This one's a little larger, and I kind of warned you last time that, now that we've used all of our money that was in the bank in New York Mellon, which was the corporate, holding corporations money, and we're now moving into the money that we've had. So we've had four million dollars that have been given to us to pay the bills. One million has been at Alliance, and we've invested the other three million in Trust Indiana. We're at the point where we've had to move the money from Alliance Bank into our, into our funds. And you will, you can track that on your fund report as well, because it should be listed there as zero, seven hundred. You'll see Construction Fund has four million dollars as a beginning balance in June. And there's been nothing spent because we're. I should have given you July. I didn't give you June. I'll give you July. But we really haven't, haven't had to do that much. So you'll see at the bottom, the last one is for Tecton West Central Renovations for one million, three hundred forty-two thousand, five hundred nineteen dollars, eight cents. These are for the work that's been completed to date. So I got the bill Monday or Tuesday. And so we get a bill for the progress that's been up to this point. So as you can tell, most things are, are getting ready to be wrapped up. There will still be some retainage that we retain. We won't pay that out until we're satisfied with all things that have been taken care of. But this would be for grandstands, it's for electrical, it's for HVAC. Tri-Tech, it's for Tecton, it's for a little bit of Mocha Park. And I believe they're going to be on your claims form too, so I can point those out. Other things, you have welding supplies, nineteen hundred dollars for those Chromebook parts. Twenty-four, five, eighty-six for Clever is a single sign-on for students, so they don't have to know their passwords to NWA. Their password to iReady. They can log into Clever and it logs them into each one of those. Renaissance or Accelerated Reader, they also use it for checking books out in the library. Complete Electric Elementary is getting its new serving line, so that's to pay for the electricity that needs to be upgraded before those are installed. Twenty-four, five, ninety-four Activity Tables. The elementary school, they needed some kidney-shaped tables, and there's some other furniture that we'll be buying for that. Twenty-four, six, oh, one is NWA. It's map fluency seats and just fluent, uh, it's just NWA in general. That's our student assessment. You have Ulines, office furniture there for the elementary school. Furniture at the high school and middle school from O's, from seven thousand is the construction. I believe that is some furniture for the press box. So we have some new chairs going up there. We have a tall table, some tall stools to go in there. Nursing supplies, bulletin boards, and then Tecton one. Questions?
I was told that's not ready yet.
Press box?
It's got power and everything.
Air conditioning?
So we can use that.
None?
Okay.
Locked.
Just said it wasn't ready.
You were just told we, we got our schedule for football, for junior, senior tackle.
There's a light that needs to be put back up yet, and there's no furniture in there. So we get furniture.
We just didn't even know we could.
Use some bleachers.
You should be able to use, yeah, there shouldn't be a holdup on the bleachers. Now, they were putting in today fencing on the front and on the side, so they may not be done with the fencing, but otherwise it's, it's, should be ready.
There was a little gap where kids could get underneath last night, so.
There's a gap between gates too that's concerning, that somebody could get through to.
Some both kids running around in their own bleachers. I was like, oh, they got it.
They were under the bleachers?
There's a little gap.
I got the bleachers.
That's, 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 yeah, that's dangerous down there.
Yes.
Yeah. Ready.
All in favor of the requisitions as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. I need a motion to approve resignations one and two.
Don't move, Mr. President.
Dennis?
Second.
Oh. Questions on the resignations? All in favor of resignations one, two, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Motion to approve appointments. Lost my other. It just went through?
No. A lot of my other.
Yeah, one, two, four, it looks like.
Did you not get it back?
There should be a point, right?
Yes, uh, yeah. Can you make copies real quick? Yeah. All the other ones.
Email that bunch on them.
So, well, we have a, Tecton has a finish product day or finish project day.
Substantial completion was August first.
They lose money every day after that? I didn't make the contract or penalty.
Good question.
I left somebody a voice when I heard that, yeah.
Good. If you're not done by your.
Well, that's kind of what I thought the whole, August, the first thing was about. Very nice, but just every time I've been in the high school cafeteria and the walkway throughout the summer, which was quite a bit, I'd even say, I was not impressed with the amount of people that were actually there physically.
They've had difficulties finding people to work.
Does that fall on Tecton or does that fall on the company?
Technically, our, our agreement is with Tecton. These guys are all subcontractors, so that's, I just, I just.
Substantial completion can be.
Yeah, and then pretty, pretty broad. So in the substantial amount of work is completed. I haven't been in the cafeteria. Were you able to use the cafeteria?
We're gonna use it, yeah, we did. We're gonna use it tomorrow too. We have to. So we, we hold a contract only with Tecton to be our manager.
Yes, sorry.
But, but the board has contracts with all those, those, those accepted bids.
Tecton does not have those contracts.
We do, we do, we do. So like Tri-Tech, they hold it, we hold a contract because they accept them as a lower bidder. So it's up to them. So what, uh, what Tecton is telling us too is that all the contractors have had a hard time finding workers. Um, you know, there's been a couple of times, I don't know if they're getting people from like work one that are showing up every day to do something. I don't think they're very skilled, some of them. When we had demolition in the cafeteria, uh, Mike could probably say, it seemed like it was a bunch of high school kids in there with a sledgehammer slamming stuff around. Um, they ripped out boards and then realized afterwards, oh yeah, we could have used those to frame back in around the steps. So now we're pulling boards off the back of the stage to put in the front because they threw those out. Yes. Just stuff like that. It's, um, it's very frustrating. And so like the gates, like I went out this morning. The gates only open ninety degrees. If you go a little bit further, then the whole thing starts shimmying and the whole thing gets out of whack. So it didn't, there's just lots, there's lots of, lots of things like that. Like at the bottom of the chain link fence, um, they didn't curve it up. So they're like, they're just metal pieces like that at the bottom instead of bending it up, you know, um, there's just a lot of.
But isn't that why we hired Tecton for them to go in there and find them little things to be able to like.
He is, yeah, and he's getting on.
Go back and hold them accountable.
And he is. And, and it's, he's been riding them hard, especially Tri-Tech, because there's like, like I said, the demolition was, you know, that way. And, um, there was dust everywhere. And then after the fact, they decided, I don't even think they, well, they did put up some um, plastic on top of the stage, but it was after the fact, after they'd already done all the demo. They took all the, 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 um, dirt out of, from the, to, to carve the steps. Uh, and then they put the plastic stuff up, which, you know, and he, and Tecton's been, they have been really good. He's been here almost every single day. It's kind of like, I am, I guess. I hate to say that. You guys don't listen to that. Kind of like, you know, getting on them about stuff and telling them, you know, you, we're not gonna allow you to be on the, on the job if you can't get this done, or that's unacceptable. You better come up with a different solution. So he's really good about that. So I, I would say he's probably the best one I've ever worked with as far as knows what he's doing. He actually, um, used to work for Central Indiana Hardware. And so there was an issue with the new door that leads out to the graphics doors, not the graphics doors, but the other set of doors would rub because the concrete was poured at an uphill, at an uphill slant at some point, at some point, and it's not going to hit. So he actually worked with Jamie the other day. They took the doors off and he cut them down himself for us. So now it's, there's a, you know, it's, it will, it will clear. Um, he was out here today. He had a hose and he cleaned off, uh, entrance twenty, twenty-two with a hose and moved stuff off of there, get, you know, to help get us ready for tomorrow. So, yeah, he's, he's done a really nice job. I asked him to come next month and kind of give you just an update of where we're at, which we should be done and you know, that kind of thing. But they've done a, he's done a nice job. It's the contractors I think he's frustrated with. And he says, even in his meetings with, um, other project managers, it's not just, it's, it's everywhere. It's, you know, yes, people that know what they're doing, people that, you know, have attention to detail or know what they're doing, just know what they're doing. Getting people to show up. It's, it's a struggle. So. Anyway.
Thanks. Uh, need a motion to approve that employment's one, three, thirty-three.
Me.
Hold on, Karen.
Darren? Any questions on any of these employments? All in favor of employment's one, two, thirty-three, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Motion to approve leave requests, uh, one and two.
I'll make that note.
John?
I'll second that motion, Mr. President.
Done. Any discussion on leave requests? All in favor of leave request one and two, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. I need a motion to approve a salary adjustment as presented. I'll second the motion.
What, what's that? Say, what, what is that?
This is salary adjustment for Jamie Fritz. So Jamie has went, has taken upon himself to get certifications in different areas so that we don't have to hire an outside source. So, um, he takes care of, of all of our water testing. We have wells, we have an elementary, we have an elementary well and a high school well. So he does all the water testing for that, for IDM, underground storage tank. He, um, he has to do regular tests on that and report to, to, um, IDM on that as well. He's certified in turf management, so we don't have to hire TruGreen or someone else to come and do any kind of our lawn type things. He can do all of that. Also certified to, um, to administer pesticides. So we don't need to have an outside company come in and spray in classrooms and other areas for pests. He's a certified pool operator. He's gone to that. So he knows the chemicals that are involved. He also knows a lot of those rules about the pool. He, he, he does a lot for us. He's on the low end currently of what others are paid in his similar position. This is a request that he put that I this was a request made by him that I've reworked, uh, to present to you. He always is available, no matter what it could be. Nine o'clock at night, if something happens, he's gonna be here. Um, he, he knows this. He's very knowledgeable and I trust him a hundred percent. So, um, I, I think he'd be hard pressed to find anybody that does all he does for what little we do pay him. So I would like to recommend a, a salary increase. It increases life insurance from thirty thousand to fifty thousand, which is not out of line either. Usually life insurance should be roughly like one year's salary for someone. So that's even less than a one-year salary for him for that. But he's, he's done a lot. He never complains. He's always, um, very agreeable. He's been involved with, with contractor meetings. He spent a lot of time this summer with contractors, with Tecton. Um, he stayed late today, put up two water fountains because they didn't get the, you know, from Lamco is here, but they're doing that half-wall protective stuff. So he stayed late tonight. He got here at six o'clock. He didn't leave till like six, um, to get those in because school will start tomorrow. So.
You wouldn't repaint somebody like that.
He's a go-getter and he doesn't ask for a lot. Um, and he does things because it's what's best for West Central. And he knows that. He doesn't do it for his own, for his own glory. He does it because it, because he knows we don't have to outsource that.
If I outsource and that, we pay a lot of money.
Absolutely. Like even that water treatment license, when I was at North Newton, we would pay sixty, seventy thousand dollars a year for that. Because you've got to have somebody that is trained and that, um, can pull the samples right, because you have to take samples periodically and then send those off to IDM. And then if they don't pass, then you have to, you know, we have to post that we didn't pass and that kind of thing. So.
Yeah.
Thank you. All in favor of the salary adjustment as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you. So this is not an item that I had, but, um, it's approval to advertise the twenty-twenty-six budget. So we've reviewed the twenty-twenty-six budget um, in our budget workshop. This is just permission approval to advertise. So I've given you information. If anything changes with our ADM or a number of students, I may have to tweak a little bit our education fund. If it, you know, is, if we end up with six hundred and forty kids, that's twenty more, then I may need to increase the budget a little bit because we'll have more money. Or if wheels fall off the bus and next Tuesday we have five hundred and eighty kids, then I'll need to adjust the budget. But, um, you've gotten information about the budget. This is just approval to advertise because in September there'll be a hearing and we have to make this available for the public so that when you have a hearing, if anyone, any concerned citizens, uh, would like to come talk about the budget, then they're welcome to come do that. So I'm just seeking permission to advertise twenty-twenty-six budget, including the twenty-twenty-six Capital Projects Plan and the twenty-twenty-six Bus Replacement Plan.
Seconded, Mr. President.
Yes, Todd? Any other questions on that? All in favor to advertise the twenty-twenty-six budget, please say aye. All opposed? Motion passes. A motion to approve the Fall Festival Facilities Rental Request. Aaron?
I'll second.
Did you do this last year?
Yes. So they, they've asked to use the pool again. Um, they use it for a, is it triathlon?
Right.
Yep. And so we're one of the legs of that. They really appreciate using the pool. So I'm asking to, to use the pool without rental, not charging them.
Keeps them out of the bonnet ditch.
Yeah.
It works out really nice. They, they start here. They do that.
They start here.
They start swimming and then they do the bikes to town, to the town park, and then they run around down. It, it's, I think it was, numbers were down last, the first year they did it, it was really big. Last year was down. Right, but.
I think TR was missing, wasn't he?
I think he was there. Was he not there last year?
I'm sure.
But I, I, I think the numbers were down last year, but it, it's a nice event. It, it'll show off the new pool or the new improved pool. So.
All in favor of the Fall Festival Facilities Rental Requests, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Motion to approve the Schultz Family Benefit Facilities Rental Request. Done. I'll second the motion.
I can explain a little bit. So this is just a, a benefit for, uh, one of our students who is experiencing cancer. He's lost, um, part of his leg. Um, and so I think he has a long road ahead of him, as does his family. So this would be to also waive any kind of, uh, fees for facility rental, is what I'm asking.
That's what I was gonna say.
Yeah.
Really?
Yeah.
He is out there and he is giving.
He was, he, he came up behind me the other day and I'm like, what? Yeah, it sounds real different. I was like, oh. He's out there.
The same, the otherness.
Yeah.
He's out there giving it all.
He's never given up. He's a, he's a trooper.
Hmm, yeah.
Uh, all in favor of the Schultz Family Benefits Facilities Usage, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. All right, I got a motion to approve the West Central Youth League Volleyball Facilities Request as presented here.
Shut motion.
I'll second.
Aaron?
Yeah, this is a Sunday request, um, Sunday practices.
You guys have that one here, pack it. Nice.
Yeah, I put it in the packet.
I have the, I have the, uh, the next one.
Well, I, I, I think it was put in upside down.
Fill the back of something.
There it is. Sorry.
Yeah.
Yep. Yeah, sorry.
Okay, good, okay. Um, it's a Sunday practices. So this is the youth league, and I haven't brought those to you because I asked you six months ago. So if it's youth league, we wouldn't charge because that's all of our kids. And you said that was okay. I think this would be a Sunday practice for youth league. So since it's Sunday, that would be good to get it last thing important.
Uh, all in favor of the Youth League Volleyball Request, uh, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Nay. Motion passes.
We, we, that was a nay. Okay.
Need a motion to approve the West Central Youth League Baseball Facilities.
Obviously.
I'll second.
Jonathan?
The ones, again, a Sunday practice as well. It's from four to eight. One was from twelve to three thirty.
Uh, all in favor of the Youth League Baseball Facilities Request, please say aye.
Wait, hold on, are we, sorry. Are we charging for this one?
It's youth league, so no, we don't charge.
Okay.
But it's a Sunday, so I would have the board approve that.
Same as a volleyball, right?
Yes, yes.
It says, let's say from January to March.
In the gym.
What's that?
Right.
It says one, eleven, twenty-six, three, fifteen, twenty-six.
Yeah.
Start practice.
Sorry, go ahead. Yeah. Uh, all in favor of the Youth League Baseball Facilities Request, please say aye. All opposed? Nay. Motion passes. Need a motion to approve the West Central Online School Within a School Proposal as presented here. All in favor?
I will second the motion.
And then maybe we can have Mike explain that. So Mike has done a really nice job. He and I, um, participated in a webinar, probably in June or so, with Central Indiana Education Service Center. So the service center is one of eight regional service centers. And the one in Indianapolis is the one that hosts, that holds an online school. So they have an online school component. And so, um, we had heard, or I had heard too, that the White County schools were all gonna go together and they were gonna create their own online school. We talked about this. You gotta pamphlet, some of you, that Katie was starting an online school too. And not wanting to be the last one to have an online school or to lose kids to an online school, Mike and I talked about searching out and finding out a little bit more about this Central Indiana Online School. And so we did that. And Mike has, if you want to kind of talk us through this a little bit and kind of what you found out and a little bit more about what this is and.
Uh, so I had emailed the, our contact, I can't remember my name, right? I had a couple more time for some clarification. And she gave me some other schools around the state that's already doing it. So I looked at their books and such far, kind of pulled it together, um, what would work for us. Um, and it's pretty flexible. We can set it up the way we want it because it's our school. There are still our students. They're West Central students. They get a West Central diploma. They can walk across the stage as West Central students, uh, with that. Um, and so Central Indiana, they provide all the teachers. Uh, they attend classes by their schedule. They have their calendar that they follow. It's a combination. Most of the core classes are synchronous instruction and there's a combination of other asynchronous for some of their electives or CTE type things are, um, asynchronous work. So there's a schedule they follow with that. Still being our students, um, I think too, not only like we don't want to be left behind, that we're not the only ones doing this, but I think some of the students that choose to go online might be more successful, still being under our umbrella and um, that we know them. They can still come in and talk to Marcy as a counselor, like what's the best path for you to do what classes should we take? We monitor attendance if they're not, you know, participating. Um, so we get the accountability part of it, but at that point too, we still have a touch point with the families to, um, help them through all of this. And in talking to them too, it's totally, um, optional. Some stu-, um, corporations have chosen. Um, it's just hundred percent virtual. I think we maybe best to do what we currently do with our homeschool, give them an option of part-time if they're, if there's a CTE or a band or something, they want to participate here on campus and then go and do the rest online, I think. Um, things like that, we could offer still more and help the kids more to do that. Um, that way the state funds virtual students at eighty-five percent. Um, so just if our tuition was ten thousand dollars for a normal student, we would get eighty-five hundred dollars for a virtual student. We would pay a graduated scale to Central Indiana, depending on how many students will enroll on it. So right now the average is two fifteen to two sixty per class per semester. So if you kind of take it down, we would still some money for us per student that kind of still covers our administrative part for the work that we would be putting into it. Um, my proposal is still, we don't know how this is gonna look or try that if there's a few select students out there that we could try it with. I don't want to just, A, who wants to go online. Um, I don't really want to encourage it because we know too, the vast, vast majority of students, the best place they can be is in a classroom in front of a teacher. So, um, I've noticed some of these other schools are starting it. They just put it out there on their Facebook, if you want to go online or not, you know, so I don't think that's what we wanted to at this point and just kind of see a few that if they try to enroll, say, we're gonna go online, we're gonna say, well, we have this other option for you. You can still be a West Central student. And if they do want to come in for a couple of classes, learn a while or something, we get additional funding for CTE, but also that enables them to go ahead and participate in sports or dances and clubs and stuff like that. Otherwise, if they're full-time virtual, I think it'd just be like, oh, school, they would be doing, participating in those things. So. It is too, I mean, we just don't keep up. You know, but I do think too, if we could do our own, maybe we could benefit those students online. So still keep a little bit of touch points with them and underneath our umbrella. Just sending off to Indiana Digital or Indiana Gateway or something like that.
All right.
Alright, sure, go ahead.
Who, who would oversee this? Would that be you?
Marcy and I, we would, we have access to their student information system too. And then I think they share things. So yes, we would still pull the reports from there for attendance, grades. I think we issue the report cards, you know, they give us the grades, we enter them into Harmony. They'll still be there. They get our report cards and so.
So if someone's taking three classes online, three classes at school, is the funding split then so for the three, basically you get eighty-five percent of the class for the online classes. So will that be that we get? So it'd just be a prorated, yes.
Yeah. And that's the way it works now for homeschool students that come in. We get a prorated like two sevenths tuition for them if they're coming in for two periods a day.
Is this available high school only or junior? I obviously Sean hadn't seen anything.
Right now, it would just be seven twelve. Maybe it's doing twelve. I, I think Twin Lakes is only seven twelve. Um, North Y just put theirs out, so I didn't look at if they're offering elementary or not. I think Franklin down there that they were one of the first ones I looked at. They may be just seven twelve. The vast majority are just doing it, but they
So how long has this thing been in existence?
It was a long time. I mean, it was what, twenty years or something? It's been around or twelve or sixteen years?
Yeah. Twenty sixteen? Maybe. I have a PowerPoint, I have a PowerPoint somewhere, but it's like takes a long time.
Yes.
It's a number of districts partnering. It was, there's a huge number of districts partnering with them. Like they know what they're doing. It's not like there's only ten of us or something doing this. They have a lot of students. I mean, they're a moment shot up like this since COVID. And that's PowerPoint that she said.
So are the schools that have done it for a while, have they seen more students take off? Could this then?
Um, I did not talk to any of the schools, only just the rep. Whether, I would say yes, because I think the number of students has increased faster than the number from the graph, if I remember correctly.
Someone goes totally online, are they still extracurriculars or?
No. I propose to them that they would be full and virtual. It's no athletics, no clubs, no dances either. There's no dances, so they wouldn't be eligible for prom or homecoming. They could come as a guest like anything else, but.
I think what's nice is you have kind of control. And we kind of talked about, okay, you've known the students that are going to go Indiana online or whatever, or keeping in touch with those students because odds are, a lot of them come back.
Yeah, we've got some off the top of my head, just yesterday, we got four coming back from online last year.
And that way that you're, you're still least connected to us. So because you don't know what they've done and they probably have done nothing in Indiana online, but at least this way you kind of have some kind of touch point.
Finding those online commanders are way lower.
Well, I mean, I think that's you wonder, so with some of these kids with homeschooling even.
There some of the transcripts and stuff seem artificially inflated. Online.
I mean, I like the idea that yours is to keep it low profile. We've got a few students that would benefit from it, but we don't want eighty-five percent of our school going online and then, you know.
There would be, um, I think in there too, there's like an application process, just because you say you want to go on it. We can look at your grades, your attendance or other factors and things now.
What stops them from doing that and just saying they're homeschool though?
They will, they will, but, or just going to Indiana Gateway or something, but that's the student that we know won't be successful and it'll be our accountability trying to hound them, make sure things are being done.
Yeah, and it might make them jump through a few more hoops though.
There's, it's a pretty big process to couple those that left mid-year, last year to actually apply and get set up and started as a couple of those online schools. Yeah, if we deny them, you know, they're just going to jump ship and go to some other online. And that might just be the best thing for them too.
Yeah, so.
And it's in there too, just because they did it last year does, one year doesn't mean that they're automatically able to do it the following year too. It'll be reviewed again.
Mike sent a lot of homework home.
Yeah, appreciate it, Mike. Thank you. All in favor of the online school within a school proposal, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Alright, Mr. Walsh? You got anything tonight?
I do, uh, a little bit.
Okay.
Couple things. Just, um, then, uh, we, we teach tonight, I started doing well. So we had, I think that the teachers, I went around to all the teachers and most of uh, their classes were all full, already had people in there. So that was nice to see and uh, so there was a lot of, uh, a lot of things going on right, right away. So it was, it was a good momentum builder going into tomorrow morning and with the school starting and everything. So, uh, we did, um, have our meetings on the sixth, um, and we talked about, uh, our positive behavior matrix with the teachers, so that they're going to introduce that to the, the, um, to the students, uh, at that time, so that, uh, everybody's on the same page, everybody's using the same language, everybody's doing what they're supposed to be, um, uh, doing. And we're looking at a more positive approach to, uh, to things so that if we're going to catch somebody doing good and, and, uh, and looking at those, that ninety-five percent that are always following the rules and trying to get that five percent to come with us, uh, a little bit. So we're going to kind of push ahead. Um, also looking at, um, just made some, a little bit of adjustments to our master schedule, um, with a teacher's help, uh, and, uh, just trying to look at so that we can get our teachers, uh, working together in, in groups, like if it's first grade, first grade is going to be, uh, having their plan period together. So it's going to strengthen our, uh, professional learning communities. So have that, uh, that ability to, um, to work a little bit more and look at the data and try to strengthen that, uh, that academic dynamics and instruction. Um, and then, uh, I completed all the one-on-one meetings with every staff member. So I got, I got everything, got to talk to everybody. So, which was great. Um, so I finished that up, uh, uh, yesterday and then, um, uh, we are starting a, uh, student ambassador program for our fifth and sixth grade students. Um, so those are, um, just basically, they're going to help support our younger students uh, during arrival and dismissal, uh, and, uh, on other things. So just to kind of hone their leadership skills for those, uh, fifth and sixth graders. Uh, they have to apply for the position. They have to, uh, send a, uh, like a paragraph of why they want to do that. Um, they also have to get two signatures from a teacher that would approve them of doing that as well. Um, so, and it's a monthly thing. So then they, they can reapply every month or you can have other students do that. Uh, at first I want to try and with four students and kind of build from there so that they can help out with the little ones in the morning if they're, you know, getting them to class or getting them to their breakfast. So we're not um, always pulling and, and losing that valuable time in there. So we're trying to get the, uh, our older kids to be more, uh, vigilant, more, uh, in that leadership role on them. See what else they have. Oh, we, we had, uh, we have twenty-one new students that, uh, have enrolled that were, were re-enrolled this, this, this time. So it's averaging about, uh, Marquita six classrooms. We have about twenty students per class, um, right now. So it's, um, a good number, uh, to start out and, uh, I'm just real excited for tomorrow. I think the, uh, teachers are excited. So, uh, kids are excited, uh, from what I saw and, and just happy to, uh, that's starting. So.
Are the kids really excited?
I think, you know. We say they're, they're not and but you could tell and then they were, they were so excited to be there even last night. It was, it was fun to see. I mean, you know, ask them if they're excited. They're like, no, not really. And that, they're like, yeah, they, they really are. So it's, it's gonna be great.
Good luck to you tomorrow.
Yeah.
Thank you. Awesome.
So we've been busy getting ready to start the year. We also had full hallways last night for meet the teacher and the cookout was a success. I kind of agree that I'm darting back in for a couple things from the cookout, but even the older kids are like smiling and happy and everything. Too. So, and they're secretly happy to join you, right? Um, our enrollment looks to be about the same. I think we're about the same, but coming back in a few that's moved away. Um, instruction update's looking great and excited to see what it is when the finishing touches are done. Um, this year we plan to be more intentional, strategic with our success time. We're going to use it for uh, more support on checkpoint A for the iLearn and then retest for checkpoint B to see if we get more kids that, um, proficiency and also use that time, um, as a true study hall, study table time for those that are not passing uh, their classes. Uh, AP Advanced Placement scores came out last month and very happy with those. So, um, nineteen out of forty-three students got a passing score three to five to earn college credit and English, literature, calculus and bio. So.
It's really good.
Yeah. Very, very happy with that. You could say a nice job, I think. Uh, AP Tech partnership helped with that. So. Yeah. And I think often after you know what Hillary said today, the number in her AP class today, this year is huge. Yeah, no.
Thank you.
Cool. So tomorrow's our first student day. So we're all excited about that. We had a good turnout for, um, meet the teacher. Had a bus meeting last week and routes have been set. Uh, we combined Nancy and Jody's routes. And so, uh, Jody's going to be more out for Nancy's routes. Um, and so we have some adjustments doing, uh, Darla. So we're taking Darla out of Francisville town, more out to the country southwest of town. And, uh, so there might be some changes with, with that. So we have some new routes. Uh, we had new teacher orientation this week. We have two new teachers and Mr. Walsh joined us. Um, and as far as the construction update, we're getting close to the end. And as you can see, um, most of the improvements kind of mirror what the pictures are showing. So it is kind of pretty spot on. And so if you'd like to go to a real quick tour afterwards, I know some of you are busy. You're welcome to. We can walk real quick, but I think we're in a good spot. Um, elementary cafeteria is pretty well all finished. They, uh, these panels that are up at the top are not in yet. They should be in. I think they're supposed, they said this weekend or so, but they won't be installing them until a weekend so that they can get tables up off the floor. Uh, and then the panels on the wall are not in yet. They need to come back and look at the paint, uh, paint on the metal columns. Uh, we had an issue last couple of years ago with paint in the boys restroom peeling off and kids would stand there and peel the paint off. Because it wasn't, it wasn't the right paint or something. So we had the contractor come back. They just stand there and just peel off. And so same contractor.
Oh, wow.
Which has done us good. I mean, they've been good to us, but it's same thing on the metal columns. You can just, because we had cleaners in there cleaning and then there's spots of white. Like why are there spots of white? Well, you go up there, you scratch it and the paint comes off. So it's like it wasn't the right paint or it wasn't prepped or something. So so we've still got some issues we're still working through, um, in that space. High school, um, there's still some things that have to be done when they need to wrap these columns in the same protective stuff that goes on the walls. Railing, handrails aren't installed yet on the stage. The stage, uh, steps are cut in, which is nice. We can get rid of those old rickety metal things. We can send those to the
Just need to brush the stage at the top.
We're getting a quote on that. Yes, because the quote did not involve any kind of prep on that. It was just to paint it black. It really had to, yeah. So we were getting a quote for that.
Do that.
Yes, yes. Um, flooring is in, the rails are in, um.
Did I hear right? They had to paint the rails by hand?
They came in, they come in painted, but the, the grates come in like a they, from the factory, they come in painted like a gray. They were like a gray color. And then they came in and paint, painted them black.
They painted the grates by hand?
Well, but they had a roller. They used rollers. So they put down protective stuff here and then they had a roller. They did on both sides. And so when they, so when you put in those, uh, those fasteners, those were not painted. So they came in like a gray color. So probably, um, breezeway is pretty well done. They're working on the lights. There are some window panes that were the wrong color. So Mo Park admits they made a mistake that, um, when they went, there was some glass that needed to be replaced. So what they did was they went out here and took the tent from these windows. And they didn't walk down there to check it. And they admitted they didn't do that. So you can't really tell, but you can't tell if it's sunny. There are some that look a little, little darker in the light. And so we're working on a solution with them to move some of those. So you really can't tell. And then replacing a couple of other ones in the breezeway. Um, they, they admit that they should have done that and they didn't do that. Canopy. They're still waiting on some things with that. So the letters are ordered, um, but we're still waiting on some part pieces for that. Uh, HVAC units, you see two units sitting out here. One unit goes to the pool. I think one of those is the small one, I think was the pool. And then the other one gets set at, uh, October. So, um, piping has been done, but it'll have to be switched over in October when we get rid of, we're not in cooling season anymore.
They got to sit there till
Till October. Right there, right there. Because it was a crane.
It's been there, they've been there.
It was a crane that dropped it off. And then the bleachers or the, the stands are pretty well finished. Um, they're working on fencing right now. They came into that yesterday and today. Um, putting in a black fence to a gate that will lead to the back of the um, grandstand so that we could get back in there and then.
So that lecture is closed off then where the concrete ends. That's where they're going to put the gate in.
The gate should already be in. Be sure to see it out there. It's on the concrete. And then they've fenced in the south side too. So there's a little spot where people, you know, hopefully don't go out that way. But anyway, it's fencing. That's about it.
It's interesting, Matthew, that, you know, they wanted to start that project for the canopy and that, that whole area so early. You know, before graduation. And here they are.
Will be the last project done.
Yeah, and it's something that would be so attractive. Right, opening day.
Right.
You know.
Well, and I think, you know, we kind of talked earlier, they've had difficulties and all the contractors have as far as getting quality employees to stick with it and just to find employees. And, you know, there might be only one or two people here that are doing something. It's, it's just been a struggle for some of them. And then the only thing, last thing I have is, I know that the board, um, we, we haven't talked about this, but I'd like to talk about this too, is I realized that I give you a lot of paper every month, every week, Jim, a lot of paper. Sometimes more. I think this time we tried to cut it down a little bit. Erica did a nice job trying to.
I think that's why we were, I'm like, I even looked at like, okay, I got friends to back on everything.
It's better, it's better, it's better. We talked about it. So, um, so one thing, one option of that would be, um, some schools use an online portal to upload all their documents. So I was going to show you, um, I didn't figure out many of that. It's open.
It's just hard for us to get into.
This party is a big team.
We're using a big TV like that.
Just, it just saved a bunch of things. Had some examples to show you. All right, well.
Just remember you're amongst friends.
All right, we'll just show you the one I know. All right, well, forget that, I was gonna show you, I'll send you some examples, I had all. Anyway, one option would be to use, uh, it's, it's called diligent, but it's called like Board Docs, so ISBA, um. Gives a discount of ten percent for anybody who uses Board Docs. I reached out to ISBA to ask what, what other platforms are available, and so he hasn't got back with me, he emailed me last week and said, I am at a conference, and I'll have to get back with you, so he hadn't gotten back with me. But, um, a lot of schools use Board Docs as a housing, an online platform for housing their board documents. So on the backend, Eric and I would create the agenda and put everything in there, you'd be able to see all these things, and you'd. Click on them, and you'd be able to read everything, and you'd follow an agenda, uh, we used them at North Newton, so I'm kind of familiar with it. Um, you'd, all your documents would be there, you can search, so let's say you think, oh, well, that Indiana, that online thing that, that Mike had us approve, or, you know, Mike was part of, that we approved back in. August, I forget what that was about, you can actually search. Online something, and it'll pull up all the things related to online, so it would pull that up, and then you would be able to see it, or fund report. Um, you know, June two thousand twenty-five, you could put that, type that in, and it would pull it up for you, instead of having to search through. Folders or whatever, um, so for a cost, diligent essentials is what it is, like three thousand dollars a year. So you would be, you would have to have a device, so we'd get you a Chromebook or another device, and you'd have that at each board meeting, you'd have a login, um. And all the, all the documents would be sent and stored in that portal, we don't have to make a decision today. If we get going by September, like thirtieth, he'll, he'll waive the one thousand dollar implementation fee, um. If you want to add on, some schools, and now what I'll do is, I'll, I'll send you the, the links that I had pulled up here, so you can kind of get in and see other districts. Using it, how they use it, and that kind of thing, and kind of. I use it especially on North White's policies, North White pays for the policy one, it's twenty-five hundred dollars extra a year. But like if we're, we were reviewing policies, and we gotta get, I gotta get back into doing that too, but. If, if I need to pull another report and say, you know what, we need to also do weapons policy, let me pull and see what. They use, it's Neola, it's a Neola policy, which is pretty standard, so I. Tweaked it. Borrow from them, so you can creep on other people's policies, you just type in a, you just type in a word weapons, and then you get their weapon policy, or. Discrimination policy, just type it in, and you get their policy, um, but that's the policies, you can search them, same thing, just type in a word. And it pulls up your policy, together, they're fifty-four hundred dollars a year.
How much do we spend on paper?
That's what I was saying, Andy.
Fifty-five hundred.
Especially the time, but it's the, again, all. So could we just have like our own devices, like an iPad?
Have their own device, yeah. And it really, it's not a whole, it didn't take a whole lot of time to do it, I mean, it's, it takes time, obviously, um.
You're probably saying, speak for yourself.
Actually, it's not too bad, Kathy, that puts it all together, and then, you know.
Supposed to sell it. I mean, we help you out here.
Well, we have all this in the emails.
I was gonna say, they're already emailed, we already get the electronic versions, yeah, but email.
So what she's saying is, like, once it's all in there, then you could search for something we did three months ago.
Yeah.
And, and it pulls it all on.
You should just keep it all.
File it all at home.
Yeah. Make your boxes of this stuff. You never find it.
Yeah, yeah, you're gonna go back, I mean, I think Andy did that one time, she went back like months and months and months. Yeah, for months and that, so, yeah.
It's not fair, that's like dirty tech.
File it off, I mean. Just saying, I remember she liked, she pulled it out, she was like, I found this for like a year.
Like I said, we're not making decisions now, but I can send you some, I'll send you some links. You pull around then and see like, oh, I think it'll be good, or, oh, no, if we, maybe, maybe there's another, an, another option, you know, which might be, you know, we just do a better job out doing front to back. Back to back, or.
Is it really about saving money? Do you really think that will save us money, or is it more about being able to find something that's implicit?
It's for you, it's up to you, it's up to you.
It'll be both. Cause I've tried, you, you've all tried using the Chromebook.
I tried it, one meeting.
I, here.
I didn't like it.
It was the worst thing I've ever attempted in my life.
Several years ago, we tried, not instead of flipping pages.
I tried it. You got me one, I tried it here. I was more lost with that thing than paper.
I was gonna say, I think, I think the physical agenda is nice to see, and then for the fund reports and account reports, physical, but all. All of this.
All that, I don't know, we need resignations and stuff, because we have those. Probably get rid of some of it on paper, but I.
But we still, we still probably need it a lot in front of us.
Yeah.
Here.
Yeah.
During a meeting, right.
So what I could do is, um, like resignations, I'll, I can continue to give you their handwritten resignations, because I think it's important that you get those. As far as recommendations, I can compile those into like just a list maybe, instead of each individual one, and maybe make a spreadsheet that says so-and-so what their position was, and. I'll can, I can condense that.
I'd say we try and put the paper.
Well, I mean, like, there, there's certain months where there's thirty-three, and there's certain months where there's five.
Very true.
Like this, this month was extra.
Screen time's dangerous, you know, you tell that to your kids.
She showed me a little demo of that, it was pretty neat to be able to type it in, search some, but right there, you, you got it.
Well, maybe that would be more beneficial than what I'm.
But like, do we need each, each and every one of these?
That's what we're saying, probably enough.
Put that in.
I mean, we've already got it, we've already got it in our email.
Right, we already have a list on our, on our agenda.
We had one set sitting here, just in case somebody had something.
Yeah.
We can pull it up.
Otherwise, you, you probably already read through it at home when you get it.
You were going to, you would.
Yeah, that's, that's an inside question.
On record now.
We need a third time you read through it.
Yes.
That's where, that's where you.
Yeah, I mean, if what I'm going through them, I'm going through them before the meeting ever even happened.
That's right, that's.
Yeah, that's what I said. Not how it sounded, John.
My fault.
All right.
But that's all I have for mine.
Thank you. I need a motion to approve the payroll and claims.
So moved, Mr. President.
Have a second?
There you go.
Thank you, Carl. We got the, uh, questions on the payroll claims?
Um. Still concerned about the, uh, about the turban, obviously, um. And how to. How to, how to move that forward.
And, and I think others are too, like I get, uh, every four or five months, I get somebody from Tipping New Valley who reaches out and says, hey, would you want to do a meeting, and I respond, say, yep, call, let me know when it is, and then he never. And. It, it doesn't get followed up on, but I don't, I think there's frustration in others too, that, you know, you're kind of at, at mercy because you don't. I'm thinking, if I could figure out how to do it, I would just do it, but it takes a part, they gotta get from Germany, and so, unless the board would like to send me to Germany, I will take recommendations.
Might be cheaper, right, yeah, might be cheaper.
They really have no competition in that precision. As far as, or progress going someplace else to do it.
Because it's a German company, it's a German turbine, the turbine itself is from Germany.
Yeah.
And it's. Parts are produced over there.
Yeah, but I'm saying, there's nobody else servicing it or anything else that we really can.
No.
I'm surprised that NIPSCO was just nineteen this time, I thought it was gonna be a lot higher than that.
How much we've been down, yeah, in the heat.
And it had been going there for a while, we only had been down maybe a week or two, week and a half or so, so it had been going.
Rest of it was all covered.
All covered, anyone else? All in favor of the payroll and claims, please say aye. All opposed? Passes. Anything else? Anyone? Meeting adjourned.
Again, welcome. Yeah.
I know, I need to bring some penalties out.